I would like to call to order the City of Dan Allen's Special City Council Workshop. It is January 18th, 2023. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a purpose and justice for all.
Is there anyone who's in attendance that would like to say a short prayer or give some words of wisdom to council? Okay, if not, let's just bow our heads and let's have silent meditation for 10, 15 seconds. Thank you very much. Ms. Odom-Rolka.
Mayor White.
President.
Vice Mayor Dunn.
Here.
Councilwoman Mendomta.
Here.
Councilwoman Enzki.
Here.
Councilwoman Covich.
Present.
Jan Smith, Finance Officer.
Here.
Troy Slidery, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Georgina Sid, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Michelle Leonard at Central Center Park.
Here.
Julie Anasty, Grand Park.
Here.
Chief McQuaid.
Here.
Lieutenant Yaw.
Here.
And the attorney is not present tonight. The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website at City Hall Boarding Board on Wednesday, January 11th, 2023.
Okay, before we get started on the special workshop, which I have called with the agreement of council, over a few things. If you have a ringing device on right now, this is a good time to turn it off. If you decide to speak today, if you sign up, you will be picked first. If you do not sign up, you still will have an opportunity to speak by raising your hand when everybody's done. We do limit presentations, speaking to three minutes. You can see the clock that's right there on the clerk's desk. You will be held to the three minutes. It has been known or advised to us that if I as chair allows someone to speak beyond more than three minutes, then really everyone else in the room has the equal right. So I can't show favor just in letting someone speak more than three minutes and then tell someone else they can't. We look forward to your comments, one or the difference. This is a special workshop, which means it's not on our normal calendar, which means there's a little bit of a difference in the format. Normally at workshops, you can speak at the beginning and at the end. Since this is a special workshop called for a specific reason, public comment will be at the end. One thing I would like to bring to council's attention that Chief McQuaid, who has to leave early, has asked if he can speak for a few minutes before we get into our agenda. Is anybody okay with that?
I'm not.
You're not?
It's not on the agenda.
Okay.
And I don't think if it's not on the agenda, it shouldn't be brought up. This is the reason these special agendas and special meetings end up getting a lot of stuff that we don't have on the agenda. And whatever is going to say, I really don't have prepared to do wrong. Sorry.
All right. Anybody else? Well, just to make it formal, I make a motion that Chief McQuaid be allowed to speak before we start our regular agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. Okay, Vice Mayor, you've already spoken. Does anyone else have any discussion on this? Okay, no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post?
No.
I'm an aye.
You're a what?
I'm a yes. The chief let me know a little bit about what he's going to speak to.
Okay, Chief, majority has said you can speak. Please come on up and speak.
Well, this may not be important, but I think it's important to the citizens. We have solved the murder. Warrants have been issued. The culprit is no longer in town. He's been turned over to the U.S. Marshals, and the new U.S. Marshals are now in pursuit of where he is. So in the Strobb case, subpoena's for here, it's only for hearing. We do not have to attend, and that is being held on the 31st at 9:00 a.m. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, council, we are now going to Agenda number one, which is titled City Council Goals and Priorities. We can go into a lot of different directions on this one. One of the things I want to bring out, there may be something in addition to that's not on that list. For instance, I noticed blight and derelict buildings is not on the list. That has been a major source of conversation. So there may be some other things that you would like to include in our discussion. The way I look at it, I think we're all looking at this, what are we going to do with this? This is actually a workshop concept that I had called two or three weeks ago. We never got to this. So we can go about it two ways. Number one is to list the priority of the topic, one, two, three, four, five. But I think what would be most beneficial is to realize each one of these has credence to it. Each one of these has something that certainly desperately needs to be done. And I think if we're going to shoot for goals, try to pick at least for every topic, the absolute one thing that we have to get done in the next year. I think if we do that, it really, we can do both. We can say what we want to emphasize, but if we picked one item from each one that says this is if we get nothing and nothing else done at all, this is the one thing we have to get done, that would be a very easy thing a year from now to look back and say, okay, did we do this? Did we do this? Did we do this? So with that, this is pretty much open-ended to be what we want it to be and what we make it up to be. And hopefully, who will benefit most from this would be staff. Staff needs direction, where we want them to put their time, what they should be doing in between meetings. So I think this is a good thing, what we're doing right here. So we'll start, we'll start it off. Does anybody want to begin the conversation? Usually start off with the Vice Mayor out of respect.
Okay. Yeah, I totally agree. I think we need to pick things and kind of put them in priority. I totally agree with you, Bill. I know I studied these quite a bit, and like you're saying, I think every one of these in some form or fashion are important for different segments of our city. Personally, of all this, the more I studied it, and I have, you would probably think city budget was important to me, man or old account, and it is important and it will be covered eventually this year. My personal opinion is codes and comprehensive plans should be addressed first. I think if we want to attract business, and this is my argument, and please, if you disagree, please tell me, if we want to attract business and improve business in this town, I think we need to take and look at our comprehensive plan and our code, get it cleaned up, and do proper code enforcement. If we see somebody's yard is overgrown, cars on blocks in the front yard, and it's against our code, there needs to be that done. And I know you have started working on it, but even you have admitted, there's a lot of discrepancies in our code and our comprehensive plan. And I think that hinders us from getting it all done. And going back to your blight thing, I think that's where blight falls. I think if we had a good comprehensive plan and a good set of code and we could enforce that, I think we could address the blight. Because I think if we can improve the attractiveness of our city, we will be able to attract more businesses to Dan Allen, and I think make the citizens and residents of this town feel better about the town. So I put that down as number one. So that's just my opinion.
Okay. Anyone else? Who's next?
I can make some comment, kind of off of what Wally said. I don't disagree with anything that he said. I think that as I thought about goals and priorities, one of my thoughts was vision, that there's been four or five vision, visioning statements that from 2004 to present. They've been statements by Planning Commission, statements, old statements of the city. There was a citizen group who put one together. There's a vision statement in distinctly Dan Allen. So I would hope that we could prioritize bringing all of these different documents together and perhaps getting some help professionally, maybe from a university, to help us get the language right and have a vision so that we can determine what we want our city to look like and what the big picture looks like so that we can adjust the comprehensive plan to attract the businesses that fit the vision. So I agree that comprehensive plan, it would be important to educate ourselves and move toward how we can improve that. And again, I think that was a recommendation recently of Georgina, and it's very foundational. So vision and comprehensive plan. The other thing that I would put at top of the list, which isn't exactly here, would be addressing issues with staffing and communication, to make sure that the staff that we have is feeling supported and respected, and that we have a good working relationship. Because no matter what order we put these priorities in, it's not really going to matter if we have committed, dedicated staff walking away or feeling disrespected. I would also suggest adding to the plan CRA. I think CRA is really important. I think it's down the line, but I would like to see CRA on the list as well. So I have lots of thoughts, but those, that's my thoughts out of the gate.
Just to piggyback off of Wally and Juliana, I agree the city code and comprehensive plan should be number one. It seems like most things must adhere to this, and that's going to be the guide to do everything that we do. And if they're a mess, I don't know how we're going to get from point A to point B without being a mess. That's all I have.
Ms. Covich.
I would like to agree with everything Juliana said. I'd also, this is difficult, but I know other municipalities have done this, okay? We know where the problems are in historic history. That row of homes that have the violations, those people are not economically, let's put it this way, they're not in an economic situation to make the repairs and so on. However, there are some things that can be done that don't cost money, like haul your car out of there. And I think there should be more besides a code enforcement officer. We didn't have a conversation with those people. Do you know that junk cars can be sold for cash? There's signs everywhere around, you have an unregistered vehicle, it's illegal to be here. Somebody needs to go to that party and say, okay, time's up. You can't afford to pay the violations, but you can call a salvage yard, a person who is in that business of salvage, and haul this thing out of here. Okay, we need to have more conversations with the people instead of just handing them another violation ticket, which, what do they do with it? Pause it. I think we need to have conversations. And then if there's people out there that need repairs, what can we do? We have volunteer organizations in this area that, special youth that might get involved and do it maybe house by house or whatever. I think we have a liaison on staff, perhaps one of those council people, to get this into motion.
Thank you very much. My brief statement on this is we could spend a workshop on any one of these to go exhaustively on all the things that could be done, should be done, or are possible. But we know we can't do all of these at one time. In fact, one of the things that the new council's going to realize is when you see smaller projects done, they are connected to these big-ticket things. We can't do everything in one year, so it's spread out over time. So sometimes when you see something that doesn't look like it's a major project, and the question is, well, why are we spending time doing that when there's other things to do? It's part of one of the big things we're doing that's spread out over time, kind of like the concept, you can eat an elephant one bite at a time. And that's pretty much how Dan Allen goes around things. We generally can't do it all with one sweep. But if you said to me, what would be the two items on this list that I think I would list, if I was going to list them, would certainly be roads and the stormwater project. I know when I ran for election, and I know as mayor, probably the single biggest concern that has brought to my attention is the condition of the roads. And I think council, those that are on council right now, when you spoke from the podium, I think I heard everyone speak from time to time about the need for the roads. Also, the city code and comprehensive plan, there is no question that needs a major workover. In fact, talking with Ms. Sid, she has suggested to me that the comprehensive plan may be in such bad shape that trying to correct it piecemeal may be more difficult than just redoing the entire thing. Kind of like trying to repair a broken-down house, are you better off just rehoused or do it? One of the key things I want to bring out to council is on roads and stormwater projects. This year, we have a very unique situation with the ARPAPHANS that are coming in, the federal, some federal money. We have this year, that we can spend either this year or maybe next year, I'm not sure how long the project, but we have about a million dollars. It's very unusual for us to have a million dollars for roads. So we have the money. So now's the time to try to do some, some great things with a million dollars. Try and public works with less than $400,000. We're able to totally repave Ohio Street, Cedar Street, and four major intersections in Blue Cove, less than $400,000. Yes?
Projects for the ARPAPHANS, we have to determine your projects by 2024, by January 24, and all of our contracts will be spent entirely by July 26.
Thank you. All right. And in line with what I say. So if you can imagine what we did with less than $400,000, you can imagine what we might be able to do with the best part of a million. We can make a major improvement to the roads. So if we're going to start off the conversation with what we would list first, what I'm saying is every one of them needs some sort of consideration, but if we're going to list them, kind of a toss-up with me, city codes and roads would be my one-two, be my, in the horse racing business, that's called the exact.
I'm sorry, that's an exact.
It's an exact, one-two. So that's my comment. All right, so now what I would suggest is if we're going to prioritize the first one, we can pick two or three, or we can now look at each one of these and out of all of them, try to pick the one thing we would really like to focus on. For instance, park and recreation, do we focus on Ernie Mills Park? Do we focus on the Rainbow River Pedestrian Bridge? Do we focus on the wildlife corridor, the trails that are now in progress? So, you know, just to give an idea on each one of these, what we'd like to see. So we'll just go, just rotate it again. Vice Mayor, you have any additional comment?
This is just on parks and recreation?
Yeah, we can do it this way.
Um, my understanding is Blue Run Park, we're committed to assist and help pay for the bathrooms at Blue Run Park, if I'm not mistaken. So to me, that clearly, and I think that's, I think based on the number of times that meeting was moved or the groundbreaking, it's going to be in October this year. Clearly, if you're talking about parks and recreation, to me, that's something that should be listed, is something we got to get started on or get done this year. And that's, and again, I don't know where we stand on the bridge and the trail connecting it with the bike trail, where that is on the priority of the state in widening the road and the bridge, and I think we have to put that wherever they're going to fund it and go at it that way. To me, that should, as soon as we find out they're going to fund it, which I don't know when that is, to me, we ought to take a hard look at, all right, how do we assist? What do we need to do? Are we going to be obligated for anything? But to me, connecting the Wethukuchi Trail to the Blue Run Trail, all the way to, you know, not on code, in my opinion, is something that's coming, but we don't know when the money's coming. So I think we put that down on the list, but it's probably going to be later in the list. Those two, to me, are the big things in park and recreation I think we need to focus on the most, because they're, they're things we know are coming. But that's where I put them.
Excellent. I like this. Let's do this. Let's just go one by one and just like Vice Mayor just did, give what you think we should focus on, on each one. I think, I think this is the most efficient way of doing it. I think, Julia, would you like to speak next?
Sure. I, I agree with everything that Wally's said. I think the bathroom at Blue Run Park and the pedestrian bridge aren't necessarily things that we're primarily driving, we're supporting. So again, we have to be there when those entities are ready to start those projects. I do think we have a responsibility to this boat ramp here at City Hall at Centennial We assumed responsibility for the ramp after a great long time of it having no maintenance. And I know that it's something that we've discussed a lot, but when I look at prioritizing, I look at taking care of what we have, and that seems to be a pretty big responsibility, I think.
Right half for parks and recreation is, first is the boat launch fee program. I sent Jan Smith a spreadsheet where I crunched the numbers and tried to make the launches a little bit more realistic versus the presentation. And I know the presentation was only just to show us, you know, what it could like, what a present, you know, just, and the number's not exact. But when I put the spreadsheet together, okay, what I'm coming up with is that we could actually end up losing almost $3,600 a week, I'm sorry, $3,600 a year, based on actual launches, using the same expenses that was in the presentation, but lowering the amount of launches per month to what I think we typically see. So we need to take a look at that. I think we need to get something going so we can get some revenue, which will lead to the next one. We need to repair the boat ramp, and we need to add a kayak launch to it. The other thing I have in our parks and recreation is we have a couple of signs out the city beach that have been leaning over pretty heavily for a while, and that would be some low-hanging fruit. Go out there, straighten up the signs, and might help with the clientele. If they see bent over signs and stuff like that, then if we don't care, they don't care. Then my last one for parks and recreation is I think we need to start taking a look at what the future costs are to maintain the Blue Run Park restroom, because that's going to be, if we're breaking ground on it in October, those costs are going to be going into the, into the next budget, and we need to figure those out and be ready for them. And that's all I have on parks and recreation.
Excellent. Ms. Covich.
Of some recreation, I think we should move ahead quickly on getting a pee collection system in place. I would recommend, again, as I have in the past, go the simple, traditional way of an honor system box. See how it works out. See how much is collected through those boxes. And I don't think it's going to be a burden on staff to do that. The second matter is, there is a grant coming up from FWC. Again, it's called the Florida Boating Improvement Plan. $1.25 million allocated for 2023. All we got to do is fill out the forms. There's very little in the way of technical aspects because the company that, that I feel and Georgina also felt, and Dorsey DeMaster from Florida Paddling Trails Association, who looked at the plans in great detail and the location, that grant is coming up, opening up in February, and we need to chase it down, nail it down, and get the money. Again, EZDOC has the ADA compliant dock and launch system in several state parks. FWC knows this. I think it's a slam dunk, and we should be certain that we get started on this grant. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll sum up what has been said, and this is some good stuff. It's already, I can already see it forming up nicely. As what was stated, we're already, we have made a tri-party agreement to construct a nice restroom at Blue Run Park. It's an agreement between the county, the city, FGUA, and US Water to build a restroom at Blue Run Park that's on par with the state parks, something that matches how, what's been put into Blue Run Park, something that's not just good enough, or it works, it flushes, it's something that's nice. So we're already committed to that, and everybody's on board, so that certainly should be a priority. And I will say this to council, if this happens, this has been something that's been discussed for 10 years by council, and no one has ever cracked the code down to get this done. As Vice Mayor said on the bridge, that is correct. This is just part of a $2.5 million state appropriation, that the pedestrian bridge is part of it. The main emphasis of the $2.5 million really is to put turn lanes on Pennsylvania. That's really what the focus is, but along with it, to put some concrete barriers where you can safely separate those that are walking across the bridge from the traffic, and also to include the bike path with the project. So as been said, that's in the works when that happens. It has been approved. The governor has signed it. We don't know when that may happen. Ms. Enzki said something about the signs at City Beach? Absolutely. Those signs... Those signs are, uh, kind of like going through the house of mirrors. Some of them are leaning this way, some of them are leaning this way, some of them are so faded you can't read them. Uh, it's, it's really somewhat hypocritical for us to be talking about light throughout the city. With, within our parks, you have ice hores that we're responsible for, that we're not taking care of ourselves. And if you looked at those signs at City Beach, uh, they are lightful. Boat, boat ramp fees are now necessary because we have taken over the, um, ramp and the parking areas. We need money for maintenance, along with the kayak launch that would go with it, which we certainly need for safety. You can't have kayaks using the same areas that people are using motorized boats getting in and out of the water. That's a recipe for disaster. So I'd say if we just added those on the list, if a year from now we said we got these all done, we've had one heck of a year. So I think this is a good start. Okay, let's, uh, let's keep moving. City budgets and expenditures. Vice Mayor.
Um, clearly, that to me is, again, with my background, that's very important. Uh, the more I've gotten involved in the budget and the finances of the city, I think they're in fairly good shape. I do question, though, how much is available? And I have no idea. We seem to budget things like we want to build something or create something that's not there. I question, without knowing the answer, how much have we budgeted for repairs and maintenance on the properties for which we own? Um, the question arises to me is just City Hall. Is there anywhere in the budget to re-roof City Hall? And is it, and the money been set aside? I would assume this building is 20, 25 years old. The roof, I know a lot of people in this state got these nasty little letters from their insurance companies saying if the roof was over X number of years, that they weren't going to insure the property. And that raised the question to me, you know, of course, we probably didn't get a letter, or did we?
We were fully insured.
Okay, good. Uh, but the question becomes, you know, do we need to paint the building? Do we need to clean the building? And I don't mean just this building, I mean all of our buildings. I mean, again, going back to this blight situation, should we pressure wash City Hall? Should we think about painting it on the outside, spruce it up a little bit, again, to make the residents of the city happy with what they own? Uh, and again, if, I don't know how old the roof is, but I know when a certain age, especially in Florida with the heat, you're going to have to replace it. And I don't know whether we budgeted any of this. And not just this building, but all of our buildings. And, and again, I go back to this blight is, and where I'm getting to is, I'd like to know how much in our budget have we set aside for repair and maintenance on everything we own? And I know you gave me a whole list of the properties we own because I asked for it. And that was the point. I wanted to find out what do we own? And are we maintaining it? And I do know in talking to you, um, the art center, we seem to be pushing that pretty hard because of the people who rent there. Without getting into it. But again, I, I think this is something we need to focus on as a, as a town. Again, if we're going to focus on our residents and our people who live here to clean up their blight and clean up their yards and clean up everything, not that I, I don't think City Hall is blighted. I'm just saying, we need to be an example. We need to paint it, we need to clean it, we need to maintain it in all of our buildings with it. And clearly, to me, the maintenance buildings you have with all the new parking lots, they look fabulous to me. But again, you look at the police station, you know, although we don't want to spend a lot of money there, but is there something we can do there? Can we paint it? Can we make it look better? And the, and not spend a ton of money? And so where I'm getting to is, I think repairs and maintenance may be something that's been overlooked in this, in the city, and we need to spend some money on it.
Okay.
I think Wally makes a really good point.
Which side?
I guess with, uh, city budgets and expenditures, I, I kind of defer to some other people sometimes because I'm not the biggest number person. I do often hear a lot about, um, there's been a lot of talk about how we can cut expenditures and how we can save money. And I think I will certainly be looking for balance as we approach any of those things, especially when it comes to, um, staff and the compensation of staff, that we act responsibly in such a way as not to cut off our nose despite our face. So that's all I'll say about that.
Okay, what I have under that one is, um, I think we should carry the unused payroll over in the next year's budget. I don't think it should be, and I'm not trying to be too harsh, but I don't think it should be a slush fund for department heads or anybody, um, to spend. It's, um, reviewing the numbers, it's actually a pretty significant number, um, of unused payroll. Uh, equipment inspections, um, I'd like to see equipment inspections. I'm just going to use the, um, bucket truck, for example. I know we have a lot of other stuff. If we could get the equipment that we own that needs inspected, have the inspections complete months prior to the new budget planning cycle, then we'll understand what repairs need to be done, et cetera. And then they can be planned for in the budget. The same with software requests, et cetera. We need to, uh, understand what we want prior to the new budget year and the cost of what that software is, whether it be the software self implementation, et cetera. So we understand the full cost and we don't have surprises in the, once the budget is approved. And this, uh, the other budget items I have is, uh, Main Street project, I know we have it on pause, West Penn Lights, I know we have it on pause, Bay Finding Signs, I know we have it on pause. But I think these, uh, projects should be canceled right now. One of the major reasons, two major reasons is, once the pedestrian bridge is in and the restroom is complete, there's going to be a whole new dynamics coming through the town. So, um, we may not need to spend taxpayer money to do any of these things, uh, once those two items are complete and the traffic starts flowing through. The other important thing with that topic is, we need to get the comprehensive plan updated and then follow that plan accordingly before we do projects like this. The other item that seems to be a little bit of a runaway for me is council should agree what we spend attorney time on and dollars, instead of having the attorney going after every rock someone throws out. Seems to be a lot of that and the costs, uh, every year we go over budget on the attorney. And there's not a real good reason for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Covich.
I'd like to, um, speak further with Tim said about our attorney fees and, um, had a conversation actually with Andrew Hand, about two weeks ago. And the conversation actually focused on the, um, possibility of creating a restricted zone of personal watercraft on the Rainbow River. All the forms that are required to fill that, to be filled out, I received them from the Executive Director of Florida Waterways Law Enforcement. And I forwarded, forwarded them to Andrew Hand. And he said, it will save the city a lot, a lot of money, meaning you won't have to pay me if city staff, someone on city staff would take a hold of this project and go on with it and just confer with me. And Bill Viver, too, said he would take care of the technical part of the, um, application, so. And again, there's the problem of Andrew Hand getting, even getting started on this. He has not. Whereas someone on city staff could go ahead and get started on the paperwork. So, again, there is a way to cut our attorney fees. So we just hand it to him and say, go on with it, do it all. It's cost the city a lot of money.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have one thing to that, please? Before we do something like, I'm asking, before we do something like, uh, ask the staff to do something, or whether we ask the attorney to do something in this particular, I'll use the example that Jan just brought up. Uh, are we going to have a vote at some point to authorize doing that? To make sure we're all in agreement with that specific topic? In this case, we're talking to PWCs, regardless of what the topic is?
Counsel is the final say on everything. So if counsel wants to bring that up, counsel can bring that up.
No, I'm not saying not bring it up, but I'm saying move forward. There will be a vote before staff moves forward or the attorney moves forward. Is that correct? I'll just use this example, PWC. It could be any example.
I would think, yes.
Okay. You know, the reason I ask that is, we have council members reaching out to the attorney and doing this kind of thing, i.e. spending attorney dollars and the council's not approved anything. They got approved that expenditure.
I have codes, rules, and regulations. Every council member has access to the attorney for one hour on any subject, anytime.
Okay, and do we track that?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Okay. One comment just on, on the attorney, and that's not really where I want to focus. But a lot of times, our attorney fees go over budget because we have unexpected or unanticipated big-ticket items that come up. For instance, we spent a whole lot of money making sure we had perfected the Blue Run Park ordinance. A year or two before, we spent over $10,000 trying to figure out whether or not someone who was sitting on council could be on the chairman or the chairman on the board of Rainbow River Conservation. We are now going to get a big attorney fee wading through short-term rentals. There's already, from what I understand, an $8,000 fee that we have spent at the planning commission level. And it hasn't even come our way. So I think if you knock out those big-ticket items that we get hit, our, our attorney fees may still be high, but this is skewing it. And I don't have an answer for that. When we get into some of these big-ticket things, it costs money. Yes, Jan?
I think, um, one of the things maybe is to be more realistic with the attorney budget. I do not base it on history. I base it on, and I had a discussion with Andrew, our hope that we are able to keep it within a certain amount. I did increase it slightly this, this current year from prior years. Was it realistic? I can't honestly say it was realistic. Because if we look back at history, like I do with a lot of other estimates, three-year, five-year history, whatever I determine is best, our legal budget would probably be a lot higher. And we probably, we might not go over the budget. But then that takes a big chunk of funds away from other areas. So it's a, it's a balancing act and it just depends on what council would like to see. Would you like to see it kept kind of low and hopefully more reasonable? And if we go over, will we go over? Or do I base it, base the budget on history? So, yeah, once we get more into the budget, I'll see which way you'd like me to go. And we'll take it from there.
Well, I would think, Jan, that we have now demonstrated our sensitivity to attorney fees and, uh, act accordingly, right? Put it, we'll put it in the budget at a level we think will cover it. But we also know when important things come up and the possibility of legal challenges and things like that. We, you know, sometimes you have to do what we have to do.
And that's what I'm doing. So I'll just keep doing what I do.
And I, I pointed out three things. I'm sure if you went through the history of Don Ellen over the last 10 years, there's probably 10 other things that cost a lot of money that the city wasn't anticipating.
And I'd like to add something to that, if I may.
Yes.
While having a realistic budget is important and we know that things come up, I think making sure that we're working smarter and not harder and that we take a look at, for instance, um, well, some of the examples you mentioned were, I don't know, some people may say that they didn't warrant as, as much time and attention with attorney fees as they got. But things like, uh, the Blue Run Park ordinance or the short-term rentals, making sure that as we're working through that as planning commission and as council, that we do make some aggressive goals to talk about it and move through it and not belabor it. Because I think we belabor it, um, you know, if we have four or five meetings and the attorney's sitting through the whole meeting, that's just unnecessary. We can work smarter.
Correct. Like right now, is, is Andrew Hand on? He's not listening to this meeting at all?
No.
Okay. And that even, uh, sometimes increases it when we call special meetings and special workshops when we have an attorney coming for these things. But I, we're all speaking the same language here. All right, so if we're going to write something down on city budgets and expenditures, uh, we kind of talked in generalizations, uh, what, what, what is it that we want to be able to look at and say, we covered it? My only addition on this is, one of the things council is now doing that it didn't do in the past, is once the proposed budgets come out, we are looking at how the budget is proposed and questioning why money is going to certain areas and why money, more money is not going to certain areas. So there's been a little bit of a change in how council is looking at that. One of the things about the budget that has bothered me is council allocating X amount of dollars to something, to a certain department. And that money is not spent for what council wanted to be spent for. And then that money, a lot of times, can be used since it's not spent for something other than what we thought we were spending. I, I have a little issue with that, that council. If we put $10,000 into, I'll give you an example. $10,000 into, uh, patching for the roads and we only use 5,000 of it. That 5,000 then can be used for something else. I, I have a little issue with not kind of knowing that the money we're allocating isn't being, it's being used for what we want, but it also gives the department has a little bit of a leeway to use certain funds the way they want to use them. So I, I have a little, that's my little tidbit. So what do you want to put on city budgets and expenditures? What's our goal on this? What are we trying to do?
Want to have better budget discipline.
But that's a general statement. What does that mean, budget discipline?
Everything I just mentioned.
Okay.
Right, changing policy on, you know.
I mean, I'm laughing because I, I, I don't know how you summarize it.
We got it. I think you read before the last, Tim, um, that, you know, when we see something like you just described, Bill, where something within the budget for X, and then in six months of the year, we know we're not going to spend it on that, do we need to amend the budget or how are we going to address it? Or if we, again, decide we need to hire somebody, we go all year, don't hire somebody, you know, where does that money go and how do we get it back? And, and, or does it get, somebody get to spend it even though it didn't go to personnel division? That, that's the kind of, I think, we just got to all monitor this. And I know Jan is talking about getting with us on the budget much earlier, which I'm glad to hear, uh, so we can kind of see these things as they develop and not wait till the nth hour to try to approve something. But we just, I think we just got to monitor it to make sure it's there.
All right, Jan, if we've concluded our discussion on this right now, what, what do you think we've just said to you?
Schedule the first budget meeting.
Basically, this is, this is.
To help, to help direct staff. I mean, I don't see any real change on my part, other than, and I, and. I mean, I don't see any real change on my part, other than, and, and to monitor every single expense in the budget, I would like a bigger finance department, please. Because that really is almost next to impossible, everything that's going through these thousands of line items that we do have. But when it comes to a certain dollar level, that we're paying bills and I'm looking at every single invoice. Now, invoices aren't always clear because there's coding for a certain item. And I don't know what that coding necessarily is, but I know where it's coming out during the budget. Can I say that that's something that council approved to spend on? Not necessarily, if I can't read the invoice. But I think that's taking it to too much of a detailed level. I think there needs to be a dollar amount threshold that you want to be notified that if there's any savings or anything like that that I can report to you as it occurs. That gives me at least a place to start, to give you all what you're, you're asking for, and then we maybe fine tune it to see how much more can I give you, how much more do you need? If you start discussing, if you discuss the budget and get it all, all put together and something comes up during the year, and you say, well, we can have money for this, where are we going to get it from? I always have an answer where you can get money. I will never say without a department head concurrent, take it from this department in this line item. I know Troy has offered up some funds that he says he could move around because his projects have changed over the course of the time period it's been discussed. I agree that full. Oh, hey, Troy said he wasn't going to be able to do this project this year because of something else. We can take the money from there. Well, we have a budget. So there's, there's flexibility.
So I would think, Jan, what council is saying is when you're moving money around, we, if the money is significant, we, we want to know when, how, how the money's being moved around.
Absolutely.
Right, I think that's over.
Absolutely, because in, I guess it's the charter, Mandy, correct me if I'm wrong, Mandy has this term on you to be able to move funds between line items. Okay, not amend the budget, but just move it around. When that occurs, if a department needs some funds, if I happen to have a little bit extra in my budget, here, you can have mine, I can bring you a report whenever there is a budget line item transfer that is being requested.
Okay, Jan, I'm going to cut you off.
I think you.
Is everybody deaf?
Overhead. I think we're looking for dollar amounts, and I think we're looking for things that are moving around. That's all we want.
And there isn't much moving around that really occurs.
I'm sure there are.
It may seem like it, but there isn't.
So Mandy, when we get, when we finish with this discussion, what I would like is for you to list next to each one of these items, what we're wanting to do with them. You know, for instance, Parkland Recreations, the Blue Run Park restroom, the boat ramp fees, like that. So it will be documented because eventually, in, in the real world, the best, we want to go back a year from now and pull this list out and say, okay, guys, how did we do? All right? All right. Administrative procedures, this one here, we could spend an entire night talking about if you want to get into benefits, if you want to get into days off, if you want to get into all these sort of things. I'll just, let's see, let's talk about it and see where, where it goes.
The only thing I wrote, and I agree with you, Bill, we could talk about all kinds of stuff administratively. I think trying to help the staff understand what we're looking for, and to me, that was my direction with this item. While I wasn't on the council, and now that I'm on the council, I still think there's some confusion, at least in my mind. This city voted a number of years ago that we would form a city that was a manager, I mean, excuse me, a mayor, council, former government, and that we wouldn't have a manager and, and the council and the mayor would direct the staff. I think to some extent, we're doing that, but I think there's still some confusion on how much involvement the mayor council needs to have over the staff and how much leeway the staff has. And I think that needs to be cleared up, and I don't know how to other way to say it, because I see things and I'll ask people something on the staff and they'll say, well, you know, this is what we do and this is how we do it. And sometimes it does sound like we're doing a mayor council former government, and then sometimes it's still a staff-run government. And I think this, personally, the council needs to take a bigger role in what goes on with the staff and help them, and I don't mean looking and micromanaging, I mean, help them, and that, to me, that's what this whole meeting is about, is to give the staffs some guidance on what are we looking at as priority and what are we looking at as important, and help the staff do their job. And I think with us as council members, we need to step up and do more managing of the staff from a high level, from a micromanaging level, to give them guidance. And I think that's kind of what we're doing with this whole goals and priorities is, okay, when we get through, we're going through a lot of different goals, and at the end of the day, I hope we have kind of a list of a priority number one, number two, number three, so the staff understands what we feel are the most important things that they need to focus on. Because without telling them what they need to focus on, I think one member of the council or another member of the council could go off and direct them one way, but if these are our priorities, these are the priorities we need to go. And that's what I think.
Ms. Bokat?
So there's, there was some talk recently about when we do proposals or projects, whether it's something like signage or the police station or whatever it is, that we have some kind of blueprint, blueprint for the project or some kind of checklist on what it looks like from start to finish, so that as, so that as the council tries to assist and guide the staff, that we all know what's the next step and that things don't just become pet projects, for maybe lack of a better word, that one person is driving and it takes a lot of different directions that maybe there hasn't been good communication on. So I know there was this idea before of council taking a more supportive role in being a team member with staff, not that we would be, again, running the projects or micromanaging the projects, but that we were working together more on projects as opposed to Jan go find us a boat launch program. There might be someone on the council who's interested and willing to work with her on that. So I think finding some way for us to partner better with those kinds of projects, to provide support and help and make some relationship building. I know that everyone on council is good at different things and invested on different levels, but I, I think it would be a, a great thing to improve our understanding on so that we're all contributing in a way that's helpful and we all know what's going on at all times.
Ms. Ransky?
Okay, just, since this last one, Juliana, I believe that one might actually be waiting on me, and I'll just kind of let that bubble up to the top and get it done. I've offered to, Troy has began it, started one, and want to take off from that and tweak it some, to come up with a presentation checklist similar to what we always had to present prior to any of our projects. So I'll get a move on that and get that out for, I'll get it out to Mandy. Mandy can put it out to whomever she sees fit. The next one is, we'll deal with the open room for this one here, revise the employee manual. I think we should revert back to a five-day work week with, as soon as possible. Then for future employees, I think we need to revise the manual, and I've gone, I spoke with Mandy a couple of times and others about whether to do it with the staff now, whether to do it with future staff. And what I've landed on is do it with future staff. Presently, we're running a 15% nonproductive rate with all the, with the time off policy that for the 13 full-time employees, that equates to a little over two years of nonproductive time annually with what we have. So I'd like to revise the manual for future employees to, excuse me. And this proposal will increase productive times by 15%, by, it will increase productive time by 5% to be a closer representation of what Dunhillan City taxpayers earn. I'd like to propose to change the sick days from the present 96 hours, 12 days per year, to five days, 40 hours per year. Propose to carry over in total banking of sick days at a maximum of 80 hours, 10 days. Presently, when I look at timesheets, we're not using a lot of sick time in most instances, even though the manual states that doctor appointments, et cetera, et cetera, sick time is supposed to be used, but when I look at the, the timesheets, it shows that comp time is what is mostly being used. And the sick days are getting saved up to be a golden parachute, if you will, at the end of a person's tenure. And we've written checks for tens of thousands of dollars, that's unbudgeted money for past employees when they've left employment, and that's, I'll leave it at that. Propose to change the holidays from 11 days per year to nine days per year, and that aligns with what the state has for holidays for their employees. Propose to eliminate the additional eight-hour vacation day if less than 16 hours are used annually. So with all that time off, that equates into, for the 13 full-time employees, we have the 4,182 nonproductive hours, which is 2.01 years annually. With the proposal, it would drop that number to, and again, not looking at, do that with present employees, but the future employees, it would drop that number to 2,856 hours, which would be 1.37 years, and it would be a 5% savings in nonproductive time. I'd like to go back and visit the tuition reimbursement program. Same thing, anybody involved in it now grandfathered in, but I don't believe the taxpayer should be paying my leash for, for the tuition program. I think we also need to explain what a day equals. Presently, there's no explanation for what, how many hours in the manual a day equals. And to give you an example, presently, with the four 10-hour shifts, holidays are getting, for general employees, holidays are getting charged 10 hours against the payroll versus a typical eight-hour day. So I think that needs to be explained out because it says you get one day for certain things, but it doesn't explain how many hours are in a day. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Covage?
I would just like to make a comment that communication is key, and I've been very pleased with the amount of communications we've been getting through emails from individual staff, staff members. I'd like to ask you to keep it up because it gives us a chance to reflect on what you're all doing and to ask questions, and then, of course, those questions and answers are shared among council people, so when we come to a meeting, we are as prepared as possible. The other thing is, I agree with Tim on the five-day work week. There are so many Monday holidays, and that means a three-day work week. And I don't know how people who are, for example, trying to work with the planning department, and they come here to the city on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, try to get business done, they arrive here on Friday, the office is closed. Rest of the world runs on a five-day work week. And of course, I would expect there would be compensation in hours, perhaps something could be burnt out, but we are here in this building at meetings until 8:30, sometimes I think that should be also considered.
More like 9:30, 10?
Say that, please.
More like 9:30, 10?
Yeah, yes, there should be some kind of compensation for staff. Give them leeway, time, maybe stagger the staff, half of you come in next morning, the other half of staff come in the other meeting. You're not on an hourly rate, but we need to consider the hours that you do spend here to be fair to our staff.
If I may interject for a minute, and I don't know if this is proper for me to say, but I think you should consider the staff's feelings and needs and wants before you make that decision.
That's what I'm saying. There could be a way to stagger the hours, next morning hours.
Just said. I'll probably call a special workshop on this and ask everybody to go through the manual, dig into it like Mr. Ransky has done, and come up with some suggestions. There's a lot of things, administrative procedures, I mean, procedures, and then there's the obvious things. One of the first interaction I had with Dunhillan City Council, I happened to be in the audience, and it was when they brought up the four-day work week. And as a business owner who is used to working seven days a week, four days a week seemed to be a different language to me. But I analyzed it right off the bat, and I brought it to council's attention, that most of the federal holidays that we do abide by show up on Monday. So if you went through a calendar year, how many three-day work weeks does staff really have? And then when you saw, see it in practice, staff oftentimes uses their vacation days one day at a time and creates additional three-day work weeks by taking Thursday off or Monday off. And I would say if you go through a calendar and you really looked at how many weeks in a year, the majority of staff are actually working three days or less, I think you would be pretty surprised. Also, there's things in there that seem, scratching my head about, you know, staff also giving you an additional day on top of everything else, a paid day off for their birthday, which they, again, don't have to necessarily take their birthday off. They can attach that day to one of the, make it a shorter week. They don't have to take it on their birthday. They can take it on another. So I have found as a mayor, being as active as I am with staff, and my emails and texts will show how active I am with staff, I have a pretty good idea how often staff is not here, they're off. And a lot of times, I have something I need to talk to someone about, and I'm not only looking at a three-day weekend, I'm looking at a holiday on Monday, or I'm looking, I'm trying to get ahold of somebody on Thursday, knowing that they're going to be off Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and they've taken a person, a vacation day. So, so I have found it to be, we're council seven days a week, I'm mayor seven days a week, and I have found the four-day work week with the holidays and using vacation days one day at a time has, it, it makes it really difficult. But that's not really what the administrative procedure is about. There's a whole lot more to it than that, a whole lot more to that, and I'm sure we'll get into that. We do have a special workshop coming up on SDRs. Possibly we'll have another one that council's for it on going through the administrative procedures. councils for it, on going through the administrative procedures. Mr. Enskep, you had a bunch of them, and we need to go through them, you know, some of your recommendations. Okay, with that said, let's keep moving. Law enforcement activity. Wow. Vice Mayor?
I'm gonna say something that's probably gonna upset people, but I'm good at that, so I got thick skin. I think the council, over the last two and a half to four and a half years, has spent entirely too much time on a new building. I recommend that we do not discuss a new police building until we have one hundred percent of the funding set up. And once that's done, if it's gonna cost two million dollars, I think we should have two million dollars funded for that building before we bring this up on the agenda. Because I've looked back at the agendas over the last few years, and clearly, police building has taken up a vast majority of what this prior council has worked on. And, no offense against the police, but I think you've spent your, your time. And we have it all funded, then we'll go for it. And another thing, in that same regard, we rushed out and bought a lot on Powell Road, which after the last meeting, we learned was not big enough for our facility. So now we've got to buy the lot next to it, and it seems that, and we bought the church building, we got rid of that, we keep making mistakes. And I think until we get all this organized and have all the money and have a piece of land that's worth, I don't think we should buy no piece of land, I don't think this should be on the agenda, I don't think it should be brought up, that's all I got to say.
Well, I think there's certainly a lot of moving parts to the law enforcement activity bullet point. I think that the issue of the notion that we don't do anything until we have all the money is, of course, that we can't apply for any kind of grants until we put out the money for the architecture and all these other things. So I think waiting until we have all the money to plan the project is unfortunately not really an option. But I think I go back to having this process from start to finish. If we, if we do map it out from start to finish, then we can understand where the barriers are coming in, as opposed to kind of languishing and spending a lot of time on it, and then later in the game, finding out that, again, the property wasn't suitable for the plan. I definitely struggle with the Powell Road lot as a site for the police station. I think that I'm, I'm not really in favor of rezoning it, and I think that in a CRA district, and I've had this conversation with Chief McQuade, that the heart of a CRA district is about light, and it's about affordable housing, and it's about how to bring the community together, and it's not necessarily about putting policing in that area. So, to me, I feel like Powell Road is another Soul Harbor Church, it's something that we're sitting on and we're talking about, and we're taking some action, but not a lot of action. But my heart's definitely not in the Powell Road property, and I will advocate to use that for a proper CRA function.
Mr. Enskep?
This is not gonna be real popular with some folks, but looking at the high drug use areas and where they're at, I felt the same way as Julianne about the location on Powell Road, the police building, but now I'm entertaining the thought that maybe that's not such a bad idea, because that area is one of the areas of the high drug use things that are going on. So maybe having a police building right there might help with that situation. Now, my two items underneath the law enforcement were, was the plan for high drug use areas, it doesn't appear they're getting better, it appears they're getting worse, and then slowing the traffic down in the residential areas. And the best idea that I have heard so far is, is lowering the speed limit down to a number that, I believe you said, Mr. Mayor, if it's twenty-five, people are gonna go thirty. If it's presently thirty-five, they're gonna be going through the residential areas at forty. So maybe we ought to get moving on, moving forward on lowering the speed limits in the residential areas, and that would, would help with that topic, that's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Covish.
Well, based on what we heard from our last meeting, from our, the site planner, our official site planner, the coring samples have not been done yet, there really is no exact knowledge as to is there a drainage problem on that lot or not. Even if there is, there is ways, ways to correct problems, such as obviously working with the elevation of the lot and so on. Also was mentioned the possibility of a two-story building, and it was mentioned by our presenter at the time that an elevator is very, very expensive. I did a little law research, and that is not necessarily true. It depends where you put the elevator in the building. If you put it in the middle of the building, it is very, very expensive, but if you use an outside wall, talking like twenty thousand dollars for an elevator. So I did not take that presentation as totally fact-driven, to put it that way. We need to go back and look at these two aspects before we just abandon the Powell Road site and say, oh, we can't do it.
Okay, Ms. Covish. Okay, this is law enforcement activity. We have kind of focused a little bit on the police building, and there's certainly a lot more to law enforcement activity than the police building. Couple things. We can have a gentleman's agreement among us, but the truth of the matter is, one of the empowerments of sitting on the council is, at any time, you can ask something to be put on the agenda. So for anyone to say, I think we shouldn't discuss this anymore, that's an opinion of one out of five. If any of the other four disagree with that, we can discuss whatever we want, whenever we want. So if someone says, we're gonna put the police building on next month's agenda, Mandy will put it on the agenda. Now, if council doesn't go anywhere with it, that's up to council. Where we're at with that lot, this lot was chosen as the best possible place for a new building, based on what the expenses of anywhere else in the city. It is doable with the plans that Chief has, has come up with, to put it on the one lot. But the warning is, you have no extra room for anywhere in the future. The way this is structured right now, and Jan could say it better than myself, but one year, three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars was allocated to the police building, then another year, another three hundred sixty-five thousand was allocated to the police building. From that, we bought the Soul Harbor Church, we had money left over, we sold the Soul Harbor Church, and we retained two of the lots, so we have the majority of the money back, and we bought the Powell lot as the site for a brand-new building. We discovered that because of the essential building codes, that a police building must be a building that can withstand hurricanes, tornadoes, and those sort of things, we came to the realization that no building that we know of that's currently in the city would be an essential building, coated building. So the mistake, as Vice Mayor pointed out, truly was buying Soul Harbor Church to begin with, not understanding that it was not within the parameters of a essential building, coated building, which means the entire infrastructure, the roof would have to be replaced, would make no sense to retrofit it. So that's why we have now gone with the concept of a new building, it's the only way to go. So really, what council has to decide is, do we want to build a new police station? If council doesn't want to go in that direction, it's dead. If council does want to go in that direction, it has to be a new one. And the Powell property is, in my opinion, right on Powell Road, it's a good location. And if we have to buy the second lot in order to make it done right, with the eyes toward the future, we're extracting the money that was originally part of the seven hundred thousand dollars that was allocated a couple of years ago. The councils of the past have said is, let's line up the docks, let's do the studies. If you don't do the studies, like Ms. Mendoka said, if you don't do the agriculture, the architectural designs, if you don't do these things, you can't get grants, you can't get allocations, you just can't go up and say, we want money for a police station, you have to do this. So what Joe from Kinley Horn was saying is, once I put this plan together and put it on this piece of paper and go hard with it, if you change your mind and you want to do something other than that, I have to start from scratch, and you're dealing with a major expense. We have already signed a contract with Kinley Horn to do these plans and everything along with it for thirty thousand dollars. So we already owe them a certain portion of that thirty thousand dollars, this thing's in play. And why it was in play is in order to position ourselves for the funding. So I would, it's, it's not that complicated to me anymore. If we want a new police building and we want it done right, if that's what we want to do, you need both lots. You don't want to just squeeze it in there as tight as you can, and the council fifteen, twenty years from now not have the room to do what they, if we bought a second lot, it would come from the money that's already been taken aside to be used for that purpose. City has no plans to take additional money out of our coffers. Whatever's left is there as a match to possible grants or allocations in the future. So where I'm at with this, if we want a new police building, which I do under the parameters that I've said, no more money out of the city, we take what money we need from what's been set aside, and we line up the ducks and see what happens. If we don't want a brand-new police building, we should put the Powell property up for sale, like we did with Soul Harbor Church. But this, this law enforcement activity has a lot to do more than what the police building. We've asked Chief a number of occasions to pick up enforcement in certain areas, and the number of officers, and how they rotate their shifts, and all that sort of stuff. There's a lot to be said there. But that's my comment.
May I make a final comment on that subject?
Sure, now, if you make a comment, that means everybody else has a chance, they'll be offered the same opportunity.
That's fine, I'll be quick, everybody, I hope you will too. I think we just have to be realistic with the money we have, and we have to be realistic with the residents of Dunellen want when it comes to this. The other thing that I had on my mind was that I think the police pension board is also waiting to hear that from us from several months ago, so I don't know where that is of being put back on the agenda, but I just wanted to bring that up out of, for them waiting for us.
Okay, then, Ms. Mendoka was offered a second opportunity to speak, does anyone else want to speak?
I do. I think maybe with my start with the police building, I limited my discussion on law enforcement. I have a number of questions about law enforcement, one of which, we seem to have five or six automobiles sitting over at maintenance, been there for over a year, why haven't we sold them? That's just a question. I'd like somebody eventually to get back with me on that. The other thing that I'm questioning is, and takes off of what Tim said about drugs in downtown, I was approached by a number of people during the campaign saying we had drugs in the historic district. And I know that Chief stood up the other day and talked about this big drug bust out on the edge of town. And that was back in either July or August, which was great, I think it was wonderful. I haven't heard anything about any drug arrests or follow-up on this in the historic district, and I'd like to know why. That's all I got.
Anyone else? Ms. Covish?
I'll pass.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mandy, if you, from that discussion, if you had to write down what one of our goals is on law enforcement activity, what would it be?
Well, I have status of the police building, question mark.
To what?
Status of the police building, which is a question mark, a plan for high drug use areas and residential speed limits.
Okay, okay.
One more, one more Julianne brought up, the pension.
And we're waiting for the final actuarial evaluation to come back before we bring that back to you, to see what the balance in that fund is.
Yes, and that was the reason why we put that on pause, we were waiting for that study to come back, right? So it's supposed to be back probably within the next six.
We have a delay than marked, usually.
Okay. All right, now we go to the next one, city code and comprehensive plan. That in itself is a mouthful. Vice Mayor?
Haven't we already discussed it?
I think we have, I think we hit that pretty good.
Yeah. I have a couple of points I'd like to add to the code section.
Wait a second, then, Ms. Mendoka?
Yeah, I would just say, as far as that one, that I think that Andrew has expressed to me that he has some resources, he's provided me with some education about it, and my suggestion of a place to start would be to see if that's something that he might be able to kind of brief us on, educate us on, and give us some next-step options, because I think that his law firm is, this is kind of their thing, so I think that he could be a resource. That's it. And again, adding the CRA plan as a future, a future goal, to revamp that CRA plan. I think that the CRA projects on the front of the plan probably need to be revisited sooner rather than later.
And keep in mind that within three weeks, we are gonna be without a city planner.
Within a week.
Hmm?
Within a week.
Within a week? Oh, come on.
Yeah, we can chuckle. I do think that, I do think that staff resignation is probably not on this list, and something that really needs to be talked about, what we're doing to communicate with the staff, what we're doing to rectify whatever is going on that's making this not a desirable work environment. So although it's not a listed item, it's certainly something at the forefront of my mind, something I've been trying to meet with staff about, so that we can understand it before we lose anyone else.
I think it's very good. Just a historical point, on the 2020 elections, which also changed the composition of the council.
I'm aware.
We had a lot of resignations and retirements from that too, so. Okay, anyone else?
Yes.
Tim?
This is, has to do with permits. When a permit's are denied, I think there should be a letter of denial, the letter of denial should refer to a statute that explains the reason for the denial. The next one I had was also along the lines of a permit, and my comment may be outdated, this may be fixed already, but we shouldn't allow permits to developers and contractors that will add future costs to the city. Dunellen Heights is a great example. Dunellen Heights is a great example. The road grading cost us taxpayers $22,000 in today's dollars annually to maintain. This is a quarter million dollars every 10 years. And the other thing that's happening is, is some places are being built at or below road grade that will be subject to stormwater issues. And then the taxpayers are expected to resolve those issues. That's all I have.
Hey, Ms. Covich?
I pass.
I think, as been said, I think we have discussed city codes and comprehensive plan. Just to repeat, I think it's very intriguing to me that Ms. Sid, one of her suggestions to me is you have to make a decision whether you want to go and piecemeal the corrections to this, which it seems to be kind of like the police building. You know, it's a suggestion that it's so discombobulated that you can't hardly fix it rather than just redo the whole thing. So we, staff might be thinking about some recommendations, how we may come across and do that. Okay, we go to the next one, road and stormwater projects. We've talked a little bit about that. We've got some money in our pocket just so we can do some damage this year. Vice Mayor?
I've actually talked to Troy about this by myself and listened to his thoughts on this. Clearly, I think we need to take advantage of this, these funds and do this as soon as we can get it scheduled. Troy laid out for me a number of projects that he could probably cover with this money over in the Ranada area as far as the drainage sewers and some paving and some intersections over there that have some, clearly some, some issues. And I do think, and I had actually had this as number two on my list behind code and comprehensive plan, which I can easily move those back and forward. But I think we need to take advantage of this money, get this roads and streets and sewers taken care of. But again, that was the number one issue I heard from voters. And also, if I remember right, that was the number one issue of the survey done by an organization about two years ago.
Thank you.
It's, it's very true that roads was first and foremost in the survey that was conducted. I, I know that Dunellen Heights is talked about a lot and the paving of that area has been on our radar and that's certainly on my mind. I think having the money is great to work on roads. We've seen tremendous success in recent years with, with these projects. And I'll just shout out to Troy and thank him for his competency in doing these projects at budget without any hiccups. So without, you know, the money's great, but without the staff to really execute the project, it's just money.
Ms. Renske?
Like Wally said, Troy was kind of driving around to the areas that he's planning on, that he's seen as priorities and what he's looking at doing with all that. And his plan is pretty solid, in my opinion. One of the things that came out of that drive around was contractors are tearing up a lot of our roads. Part of the permit process, maybe we should add to it that we take pictures before and after the roads when these tree companies come in and whoever else comes in with their heavy equipment so that we can, the taxpayers don't keep over and over again having to pay for roads that are getting tore up by the contractors. The other big one that, talking with Troy is we're in pretty good shape. It looks like with this year and maybe even next year. But after that, what, we need to figure out what the future funding is going to be for the roads because it doesn't look like there's going to be much there to do anything with. And then Jan, the question, I make sure I wrote it down right. The arcathons must be planned, like submitted and planned by, planned and submitted by 2024 and spent by 2026? Okay, and it takes, if I remember our conversation, Troy, based on the timeframe when you decide what needs fixing and stuff like that, it takes about six months for the planning process before we actually start actually repairing the road or doing anything with the road?
Depending on the project, it could take several months. You've got to get council's approval on the project concept. You've got engineering permitting. So that's going to be one of the challenges on that particular project is the swift mud review permitting, is the scale of the stormwater as well as the roads. So in this particular project, if it was to kick off, say about March with engineering, you probably with a comparable buffer, meet or exceed that 2026 deadline and not lose your money.
Okay, and the project that we're talking about would consume the majority or all of the arcathons?
Right now, that's a rough guess. When we get the IBO from the engineer,
Gotcha.
kind of gives us a project.
Okay.
Budget.
Sure.
Expectation. And you really don't know the full scope of it until your contracts come in.
I'm with you. Gotcha. Awesome. Thank you.
Ms. Covich?
Well, I still have a couple of others.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me?
The other one is for roads and streets. We need to fix the city's existing street signs. We have, like in the park, we have quite a few that are leaning way over and we have some missing ones that the, many of the residents have pointed out to me. Another thing some residents pointed out is some of the crosswalks over by the schools need to be repainted and it would help the city look a lot better. I don't know if we're allowed to or not, but it's pretty low-hanging fruit. That's paint to fire hydrants. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Covich?
I think all the bases have been covered. And I agree with him on our signage is looking really poor. Some of the street signs, you can't read them. You're in the historic district even. They're just, I don't know how many years they've been there. Troy, you have a comment?
No. Yeah, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but this has come up three times tonight. And I've been on vacations, which I haven't been to give you any updates. But the crew has actually gone out for the last week and a half, pressure washed every single stop sign, street sign, made an inventory of the missing signage, straightened up the street or the signposts at City Beach. And if they're not, let me know when I come back from vacation. We'll be back on it, including bus frames for Luke Cove, the historic district. The entire city has been inventoried and put.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
It's not completed and works.
I did wash them pressure wash in Blue Cove and I was very appreciative, so thank you.
And they're listening tonight, so I want to make sure that they have our word of communication. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you done, Ms. Covich? Yes. The one thing I can add to road and street water projects. I'm kind of getting into an area that I have very little expertise, but I, I'm aware of it. And I don't know if it's applicable to Dunellen. But what we usually do is when we have X amount of dollars for roads and repairs, we spend the city's taxes or revenues for the road repair or road rebuilding. But there are formulations out there that you can split the cost of the road between the property owners that are abutted with the road. And I'm not an expert on this and I don't know if it's applicable to Dunellen. But if we have $900,000, that means we can do $900,000 worth of roads. But if we come up with a formulation that's workable where a person on one side of the road is responsible for one-third, a person on the other side of the road is responsible for one-third in front of their lot and we're responsible for the middle third, we have now been able to do nearly $3 million worth of roads. And I usually hear things like, well, the Dunellen residents would never put up with it. And I hear all the reasons why it can't be done. And frankly, it does frustrate me how often there's ideas that have legs to it and immediately we're told all the issues it involves to do it rather than, "That's a great idea. We're going to figure out a way to do it." So I, I don't know exactly how that works, but if that is possible, that should be something that we can, we consider. I just want to throw that out there. Troy, I, I know I spoke with you about this in the past and you have never seemed to be a big proponent of it.
And, and I'm not challenging the theories and the concepts, but there are probably three, four different viable options for the council to review. So when that does come to workshop or further discussion, I'll make sure that the files that I've begun to my notes and the conversations that I've had with our engineering team get passed on to Manny to assist in that. But I want to make one thing that I did learn is the third, a third, a third is not one-third on one side of the street, one-third on the other side through the city for the third in the middle. It's actually, city does one-third, the taxpayers do one-third, and the remaining third is either grant or federal funding. So it's an alternative combination there. There's multiple options, very deep conversation. But I'll make sure those are passed on to Manny to guide the council. They're on the right track.
All right, so that even sounds more promising to me, Troy, because now if you have $900,000 and the resident's going to pay one-third, the grant is going to pay one-third, which I suppose would be the $900,000, and then the city's got to pay one-third, which is additional money. We have just even expanded our ability to build more roads.
And you reduce the individual cost.
So one-third of $900,000 would be, the city could pull this off by coming up with $300,000. To get that all done, that's, that would be amazing. All right.
And if you remember from the last meeting when I had authorization to do our SAR report, we put the Dunellen Drive here and Dunellen Heights included in the updated SAR report to qualify our city to be a better chance of grants for roads and so on. So we set the stage.
Not to dominate the conversation, but the truth is, Troy has brought us figures and I've heard figures that to do all the road work that currently needs to be done, it costs up to $15 million, so let between 11 and 15 million.
That was a five-year, that's a four-year-old report, so it's probably 20 million in today's market, but yes.
So think about it, if we go about the pace we're going where we pay totally with the funds we have, all of it, we'll never get the roads under control unless we get lucky and we get a major appropriation our way. So I'm just throwing, just throwing this out for another angle to think about.
I'd like to comment on that proposal. And that is, seems that every municipality in the city is having the same problems. Through Crystal River, Ocala and so on, their roads are just falling to pieces also. But I can hear the silent screams, the silent screams of our taxpayers. Remember that city of Dunellen, 22% live at poverty level? What are you going to do to those people who can't come up with the money to pay their share? You can put a lien on their property. That's going to make us really, really popular. Okay, let's face reality. Not everybody lives on the river and has a ton of money. People in Dunellen Heights, there have been a couple of people said, "I'd pay my share." And then there are others that said, "No way. I can't do it." So let's be realistic.
And your point of view is part of the debate. That would be part of the debate. Do, how, how do we balance what we can do to really give as many people the benefit as possible compared to what the taxpayers are willing to absorb? That would be, that'd be an interesting discussion if we go in that direction. And I appreciate that. Okay, anything else? All right, we go to residential speed limits. I think we kind of touched on that, but Vice Mayor?
I know this came up in a meeting some time ago. Was there a way to go about that? I think we need to investigate that to the fullest, fullest and reduce our speed limit down from its current 35 miles an hour. In my case, I would say 25 miles an hour for most streets in residential areas. Now, Highway 484, 40 and 41, being that they're major highways, I don't know what our freeway would be on reducing those speeds. But I do think we should take a hard look at all the speed limits on all the streets. The one that I kept hearing the most when I was running for election was Powell Road and which is not currently 40 or 41, it's between the two. A lot of people out there said people were speeding. Now, I don't know. That's just what they told me. So I do think this is something we need to investigate. I think Troy or the chief raised the question, we have to get approval on some of these roads to dual reduction. And I think we need to investigate that because to me it's just unsafe, especially in the area of Ludrun Park, having swampies across the road. I see people running across that bridge all the time and coming off Highway 45 miles an hour. It does slow down to 35 before the bridge. It's amazing to me with the traffic, with the tubers, with the cars, that somebody had gotten hurt. And I think we need to investigate that.
Thank you.
I'm definitely in favor of looking at residential speed limits. I think that no matter what we do with the speed limits, we have to concurrently work on enforceability. If we reduce the speed limits and we don't have effective means of enforcing this, then it's all for naught.
Ms. Renske?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Ms. Covich?
I'd just like to agree with Wally that Pennsylvania Avenue is an accident ready to happen during the summer months. You have kids running up and down the road with tubes. You have people trying to get across the road to get the swampies. I tried to cross the road at Regent's three days ago and had my cane at the time and a party who was driving east out of town actually blew their horn at me. Like, I was not supposed to be there as a pedestrian. We don't have crosswalks. And we don't have a button you can push on Pennsylvania Avenue and cross safely there close to the bridge. I don't know if that could be done. But for people to be driving 35 to 45 miles out of town and all of those pedestrians moving alongside and back and forth during the summer months, those speed limits have to be reduced. I mean, they just have to be. I don't think there's any question of it.
I'm totally for this. I would say to any of the council members, this speed limit by your home right now is 30 miles an hour. Go by your home and go 30 miles an hour and see how it feels. And go 35 miles an hour, which is usually the grace that the police will give someone. I did that one night, one day on home and away. And I got up to about 25 miles an hour and I start feeling, even though this was an experiment, that I was doing something, if someone dodged out, I was going to cause an accident. I actually scared myself. But legally, you can go 30 miles an hour on any residential street. So what that does, the kind of chief in the police department has been taking the task often about speed limits, how fast people are going. Well, I'm sure there are people that do speed. You can't stop it. But a lot of times what's happening, people are actually driving through areas where the speed limit happening, people are actually driving through areas where the speed limit that they're driving is allowable, and the police really are, can't do anything about someone driving 30 miles an hour on a residential street when the speed limit's 30 miles an hour. So the one thing that's in front of us, to change the speed limits, you have to do what they either say, a study or a survey. I have yet to hear exactly what that is and what that entails. Everybody seems to suggest that that's some sort of big to-do, big study, big expensive study. I'm not sure if that's the case or not. It's very vague how it's worded. I'm not sure if our own police department can't make recommendations based on their survey to somewhere, but regardless, if it needs to be done, it needs to be done, and the wordage that, oh, that's going to be difficult, we're going to have to do a lot, a lot to do, we got to get away from that. If it's something good to be done, we do it, we figure a way. So I think Pennsylvania, which is now 35 miles an hour, should be dropped to 25, and I think the residential streets should be dropped to 20, knowing that people will go at least five miles an hour above that. And that is a real positive, if the council can pull that off. I think that's a real positive, something we can do for the city. So I would, I would say, council, if you're on board with that, we should instruct staff to look into what this survey or study needs to be done, what needs to be done to do this. We good? So Mandy, why don't you put that on the things to do on Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, right? She didn't take that as a joke, did she? All right, council, we have gone through the list. Is there anything in addition to this before we move on to agenda item number two? Nothing in addition? Okay, very good, job well done. Go to agenda item number two, it's council comments. This could be just generalities, anything you want to bring to our attention. Let's just keep going in the order we've been going, Vice Mayor.
I found this to be very enlightening and very educational, I don't think. I hope from this, we can all reflect and maybe either the next meeting or another meeting, decide priorities. I mean, we clearly look at the issues on each one of these things, but I think we need to, as a council, decide what is number one, two, three, or whatever. And again, clearly, all of these are important, and all of these are going to need to get addressed. It doesn't mean, in my mind, that we start with one and all the rest of them just sit over here on the side and don't really get addressed. I think by putting them in priorities, we get an idea of what we should, as a council, focus on first, second, third, but that doesn't mean all of them can't be, like I say, with this speed limit thing, to me, I agree with Bill, I totally think this is something we got to take care of, and if it costs 20, 30 thousand dollars, we just got to do it. I mean, people are going to get killed. And like you said, Bill, and pointing out what you did the other day with some of the pictures, some of these residential streets are barely wide enough for one car, and you got a 30 mile an hour speed limit, that's nuts. I think that needs to get addressed, and we need to figure out what we got to do and what kind of study we got to do to get that done. Having said that, I still think codes and comprehensive plan, roads and streets and sewers, with the funding we've already got, those to me are still the number one and number two, and whether in which order, it really doesn't matter. Some of the other things, I think, again, if we really focus our efforts on those two, that doesn't mean we can't address some of these other things as we go along. Clearly, the boat ramp thing, to me, I think we need to come up with an idea on that, whether it's, and the more I'm hearing about this and paying somebody versus setting up an honor system, I'm about to come around to the conclusion that whether we use a chaos or an honor system, I think we start there versus hiring somebody to do all this, because I'm like Tim, I start looking at those numbers, and it's just amazing how much all this is going to cost, whereas if we start the other way, and if we find out the honor system doesn't work, or one of these other things doesn't really work, then we go to those other systems. Clearly, again, like I said, on the city budget and expenditures, I think we brought up a lot of things about attorney's calls, software calls, prepared maintenance. I think we need to figure out, are they in the budget? If they're not, we need to address that the next time we have a budget and get working on that. Some of the employee manual things, again, I think those, these kind of things can all go at the same time, but I do still think priority number one and two is roads and streets and codes and comprehensive plan. That's all I got.
Ms. Van Doka.
I guess in summary, I want to reiterate that I think visioning at the beginning is really important. I don't know that we can really set priorities without visioning. The last couple of times we've done visioning, a lot of people haven't shown up in the city. I think that we need to take a different approach. We need to make it fun, interactive, we need to get the chamber here, we need to drum up some excitement for visioning so that we can properly do our priorities. We didn't talk tonight about length of meetings, but I think everyone agrees that brainstorming some ways that we can better organize our meetings so that they're not hours and hours long would be helpful. I think we need an expert opinion on revamping codes and comprehensive plan. You know, is it start from zero, is it revamp? I really think that we need an expert opinion on that before we move forward, and I couldn't agree more that at the top of the list are codes and roads. There's one more thing that I'm going to talk about, and I don't know if I'm supposed to talk about it or not, but I'm just going to go ahead because, because for me, it's an elephant in the room, and it's acknowledging the resignation of Troy today as the city's director of public works. And I know that, I'll address, I'll respectfully address Chair Mayor Bill White, that I know that you have publicly stated and written that you have lost confidence in Troy's ability to conduct the functions of his job as the public works manager. This was sort of reinforced in a recent records request that I received and reviewed, as all of you did. So one member of this council cannot speak for all five, so I'll set the record straight today to say that I have full confidence in Troy. Troy has successfully executed the projects that are having the greatest impact on this city for far longer than any of us sitting here. He's fostered relationships with the state, the county, and local entities, and he's been a steadfast support for residents of our city. He's treated every dollar of taxpayer money with the care that it deserves, and my only hope is that Troy finds an opportunity where he can be valued and respected in the ways that he deserves. After full review of the record request, I will come back with additional comments about this next time, but I'll leave it there today. I think we need to take a look at it when we have valuable and dedicated staff heading out of the city. It's something that we need to take a look at. We need to take a look at ourselves, we need to take a look at how we're treating the staff and communicating with the staff, and every one of us needs to make adjustments as needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Rensky.
Glad Julian brought that up, and I have, as always, she does it very elegantly, and I couldn't agree with her more. It's going to be a sad day when you leave, Troy. On the city budget and expenditures, basically what I'm looking at as we go down the list, it's all great conversation. Now I'm wondering, what vehicle are we going to use to actually do all this stuff that we talked about? Parks and Recreation, I think we got that covered. City budget and expenditures, I think when we get into the new budget here process, got to take care of most of the items. Administrative procedures, looks like a future workshop to me, and law enforcement, city code plan, road storm projects, residential speed limits, I think that those have been covered by everybody else, so any further comments on those?
Thank you. Ms. Kovish.
I'm not sure where to start, but I think I'll start with Troy's resignation. I don't know how he's going to be replaced because it's been five years he's been here. It's not just about the projects and him staying on timelines as much as possible, but also he understands all of the intricacies of how to work with the contractors and Marion County TPO and so on. You can hire people with a skill set, with those relationships that are developed are high, high priority. That's how things get done. And I would just like to say that it is not a perfect world. Not everything is going to happen in a perfect way within this city. We are so concerned with money that we lose picture of the whole concept of what we are. We are a community, and this staff is the center of the community, and they need to be treated with all due respect, and when there are confrontations between people sitting up here, the people sitting up there, yeah, they're going to happen, but those controversies need to be handled in a professional way and come to some kind of mediation. Okay, we can't just, you know, and there's going to be topics that are going to be controversies between us, but let's be professional and think things out and keep cool and go on as they say. The other thing is, I think their timelines are a problem with getting things done in the city. We start a lot of things, we can't seem, even on the grants, okay? They need to be started and finished, not talk about them, talk about them, who's going to do this, who's going to do that? Start it, get it done, send them in. Either we get the money or we don't. On the attorney fees, again, Andrew Hand agreed, particularly with the grants and so on, and other aspects of city business, that he should be consulted when necessary to protect the city. Largely, that's his role, protect the city against possible libel suits and so on. Hopefully, this coming year will be a quieter one. Now we have this big problem, how do we replace two very important people on this staff? And there are problems just because of our location here in Denellon. The only thing I can say is, this is not the way I thought we would start 2023.
Ms. Kovish, are you finished?
I'm finished.
All right. I have an announcement you may have picked up on the internet, that the governor has made an agreement with Jim Gussi to turn that what was going to be Westgate into a conservation area where it can't be built upon. So I think that's an amazing turn of events where we had what was going to be Disney World North into permanently, what you see is what it is. So that came out today, and I was asked to make that announcement. Ms. Odom, we have another special workshop under discussion for the SDRs that we pick out at age yet to that.
I don't believe we have. Did we get that far enough?
We can, we're going to do that sometime in February. Okay. Okay, that is my conclusion on my council comments. We go now to number three, public comments. So those of you that have been here, those that have signed up, Ms. Odom?
Bertina.
Bert had to leave in, yeah.
Paula. Paula DePaula, 12116 Wakiwa Circle, Denellon, Florida 34432. I'm going to read, so I want to go over my three minutes. All right, I'm back again to talk about the Denellon Dog Park. It will be funded mainly by the recycling of aluminum cans that's presently being collected at the chamber. $1,600 has been raised so far, and this has not been advertised, when it is, I expect the influx to double or triple due to the many wanting to see this happen. The Director Judy and the President Joanna is totally on board with this. Volunteers are being assembled. Basically, what will be needed is proper fencing, which I hope I can get partially or totally donated. We will also need running water or drinking water, which would include electric for a pump. Some dog parks have people just bring water for their dogs, and it's not needed. In order to move forward, I think it's best to announce an area. Some people have suggested Nine Island Cove, which I believe is from the Little Lacouche River to West 40. Some prefer the retention areas at the end of Blue Run Park because it's very far from residential, yet it's in town. It seems to be dry all the time, easy to access with little traffic from C-39. They have parking in place already, and people already walk their dogs in this park. It's the type of land where most parks are built anyway, most dog parks are retention areas. I want to ask the council today, how do we proceed to secure an area? What are the steps that we need to take?
This is public comment. We just listened to you. Does anybody want to respond to that? Right now, it's just public comment. We listen to what you have to say.
What does that mean, comment on what you have talked about?
No, you can speak to what we've talked about, or you can speak to something new as you have.
Okay.
But it's not.
All right, then.
It's not forums to for us to go back and forth and discuss it with you at this time.
Okay, when do I bring up the dog park, then?
Well, based on what council has just talked about, putting it in our list of priorities, that would probably be in our Parks and Recreation discussion.
Okay, then can I make a comment about the speed limit?
Yeah, I took 30 seconds from you, so yeah, I'm in.
Okay. At Swampies, they have two entrances and two exits. A couple of years ago, a car flipped, there was an accident in front of Swampies, the car flipped completely. Basically, what the problem is with Swampies is the entrance closest to the bridge, there's not enough room for one person to come in and go out at the same time. So when people are leaving Swampies, there's usually a car waiting for that car to leave before they can enter, which causes some kind of blockage there. People are coming down from 45 to 35, going over the bridge, and then they've got a car stopped there. So what I was going to ask is, can you ask Swampies to put up two signs, one being an entrance and one being an exit? Exit.
Counsel, but based on those comments, would you like to put on Parks and Recreation additional discussion? When we talk about Parks and Recreation, Dog Park, it's been brought up a half a dozen times to us. There seems to be a lot of people interested in that.
I would think that would be good for Parks and Recreation.
All right, Andy, please put that on your notes for Parks and Recreation. Thank you very much. Anyone else who has signed up that would like to speak? Ms. Odom?
No, sir.
Okay, anyone? Name and address, please.
Mary Ann Armatinger, 10350 Southwest 195th Terrace, Denellon. I'd like to address the kayak launch, just a suggestion. I'm a fairly seasoned kayaker for about 16 years or so, and over time, we have throughout an 85-mile area in the day when we had lots of people, we would see kayak launches that were cement, and over time, it gets really slippery and a lot of people fall, lots of people, it just gets algae and so forth. So I'm going to suggest that I know I've already asked a couple of people if they would be interested as a volunteer to come here and talk to you about it. be interested as a volunteer to come here and talk to you about it. I think they would do that. They have good ideas, the people do it all the time. And the other thing is the kiosk. There are several kiosks in Marion County, one of which is Ray Way Side, which is Silver Springs. And you just, you go into this huge parking lot, if you've ever been there, and you have, oh, okay. Well, you go to this metal box in your car, and you bring out an envelope, you put your $5 in, now it just went to seven, I understand. That's it. And you lick it, tear off the top, put it in the other slot where money goes, and then you put that little thing on your, you know, window. It's not expensive, really. I mean, I hear, I hear certain awful amount, and that's all.
See, that wasn't so bad.
Yes, it was. Thank you.
Okay, who else would like to speak? I saw some hands raised. Yes, sir. Hello, Commissioner Oliver.
Rex Lane, 2123, I could drive. Just one of the things that you mentioned tonight about CRA, in the village of Palmetto Bay, a gentleman lost the election because he won. And the big reason was because once you have a CRA, you basically have to declare a part of your village or your city a lighted area, and it goes to a whole nother set of rules. You have to have a director, I understand, and you lose control over that. And so basically, consider it's not, it was a very unpopular program, but, and I know it is designed to help people, but it was very, it was very unpopular in the community. So that was one thing. The honor system, I fully agree with you. My only question is, is today, most people have debit cards, and the last thing, two more things to go past. Would it be possible, since you talked a lot about updating the code, to maybe go to the University of Florida and see if they have interns during the summer, where you could see about doing that as a project with them for free, to do most of the heavy lifting, to get it squared away to where then if we went to a professional place to do it, most of the rough work would be done so that they could do the finalized stuff? Just a consideration. And I did have one other, oh, on the speed limit. Palmetto Bay, we had an incredible problem, the speed limit, people would speed. The problem is, if, is, are you going to enable the law enforcement then to write tickets? And how much of your, because what they would do is they would go out in the morning for a few days, they would write tickets for left-hand turns, edit stop for, for a week or two, and then as soon as there was no police, everybody was making the turns again. So it was just an ongoing thing. So just something to, to, to consider. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Hello, Amber Serena, 11426 Southwest Hendricks Drive, Denellin. This is a beautiful, beautiful sight right here, you guys. We fought real hard to get you guys here finally, so good day. Okay, so I've got a lot to cover. I'm going to try to be quick. This is in no particular order. Whoever owns all these dilapidated buildings within the city, I'd like to start finding them, and if they don't comply, lean them, foreclose, and auction them off. It's hard looking at them. I mean, there's got to be code violations here. As far as city contracts, there should be a protocol for city contracts. We should ensure that they're, they're real live people with certificates of insurance. The council should review every contract, in my opinion. Every contractor should have Better Business Year rating, we're done in Brad Street. I mean, there's got to be some sort of protocol to make sure they're legit and we're not just throwing our money away. Council should approve all attorney costs that, you know, we spent close to $10,000 on the SDRs. I've spent, and our group has spent close to $10,000, there's no end in sight. It's taking up a lot of our time that we don't have. I think we really need to focus on the Wild East Corridor. That's huge. We need to do that for the state of Florida. I think we're well on our way with the Gessi Ranch. I love the honor system. It's got that old town feel. However, a lot of people have debit cards. I think we can do a piece with these kiosks. They manage them, or they maintain them, et cetera. We paid Kenley Hornetan money on the landscape design, parking. I'm excited to revisit that and not recreate that. I think on Fridays, if you guys are going to start working with, you know, the staff working, we should take Friday as a grant writing day. Let's just, every grant available, possible, let's write it, let's finish it, let's do it. I love the idea of a community outreach, maybe volunteer basis for the people that do need help in our city. Where else? Is that it? Where is Nine Island Cove? I spoke to some people that live on River Drive. They're still adamant against that. Think of the enterprise of Offspring's or another way that's going to get all community together. Spoke to Big Dev or Monty, come into HOI, the Cove. Turn them all into vacation rentals, so sticky situation. I'm sure my, my fellow SDR owners aren't going to be happy with me saying that, but I think Agent Blue Cove needs to make showing, and they need it fast. Or else it's going to get crazy. So I think I covered everything. Oh, most importantly, I guess FGUA, FGUA is the manhole on Hendricks Drive. I was riding with my boys on the bike, went to pick up some oranges, helped Mr. Scally. My foot almost went through, 20-foot drop. Please walk next door and just take a look at that. On the way in here, the new parking spot, I parked my car, almost rolled an ankle right there in one of the water mains. It's cracked, plastic. Let's reduce our liabilities. That's simple and easy to do. I mean, it's cheap stuff.
Ms. Lane, thank you. Yes, Ms. Dunn.
Kathy Gunn, 11386 Hendricks Drive. I just wanted to mention that when we got this idea to start this volunteer group, Troy was at the very first meeting to listen to our rights and complaints. And then he is the only one that has facilitated the creation of this volunteer group. And I know it's not big. I hope it's going to get bigger. But by doing this, we have increased our citizen involvement. We have had the opportunity to come in here and volunteer in this place, and we see the staff and what they do on a daily basis, and it opens your eyes. And I invite everybody on the city council to come up here and spend one day every couple of weeks and see what really goes on. And the staggering thing is the amount of public records requests, the people that come in and ask if they can build something, and get some of the staff's ideas on how we can get this job done. The number one thing is codes. And Marianne Ermitinger came up here and gave a perfect example of why we want citizens to be involved. She has a great idea of the boat, on the kayak launch. Well, we can't do that unless we get work with a city council, a staff member, and concerned citizens, and then we can come up with a plan and investigate, and then present it to the city council with a pros and a cons. But the codes, I am more than willing to spend some time and haul around with a staff member and a city council member to find out how other cities have redid their codes. I've already talked with Crystal River, Brian Herman. They have hired a company, which I'm sure Georgina knows about, to redo their codes. And it's time to take care of, of business and quit spending money on pie in the sky things. Let's recreate our brand as a place that is clean and we're proud of. Thank you.
Day four of 1935, these Blue Cove drivers down. So I'd like to talk to you a little bit about efficiency and saving legal dollars. So we have an upcoming SDR meeting, vacation rental meeting, special meeting coming up. So so far, the city and some other owners have spent a lot of thousands of dollars on legal fees, and that's all wasted because we've all been talking about changing around stuff that's already the law. So it is the law that vacation rental owners have to be inspected initially and annually for both fire protection safety and building code inspections. That's the law. So for efficiency, I'm asking the staff to start communications about how we will do these inspections with the county. The county has volunteered to do, and they're under contract, to do our fire safety inspections. It just takes the staff or the council, start communicating with Anthony Marino with the county, and start working on the logistics. The code inspections is done by Jamie Strickland, and so that should be starting to work out the logistics. Those logistics need to be worked out before you go through the section by section review of the ordinance, because that kind of lays out procedure and how the ordinance will be structured, structured on how to do those inspections. So we can do, again, multiple special council meetings on short-term rentals, vacation rentals, or we can go ahead and start the conversation, working out the logistics to see how, when we do have an ordinance, that we can comply with the law. It's not an expensive evolution to start working those logistics out now, most of the labor's done. It cuts down on how much time that Andrew sits here, meeting after meeting after meeting, discussing, do we want to do what's already a state law or not? That's a waste of time and legal money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Ms. Odom, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
No.
All right, that seems to complete our agenda.
I have a quick question for Mandy, if I may, before we close. Mandy, if the council has put a project on pause and you would continue to get communication about the project, how would you handle that? Is there continued conversations between staff and council members about projects that are on pause, or is it understood that we would no longer be talking about those projects until they're brought back to the council? Is my question clear?
I think so. So, for example, let's say one of the things is wayfinding signs. We're not talking to anybody about wayfinding signs. We're not having any further discussion about wayfinding signs among staff or council until you bring it back up and you want to make.
Because it's on pause. So if I called tomorrow and said, I have this great resource for wayfinding signs, and I would like you guys to start looking into it, you would then tell me that it's on pause?
Absolutely. And if you wanted to talk about it, or you wanted me to pursue something with that, it would need to come back to council for a full agreement from council to move on that. I wouldn't spend any time on it without council's authorization.
Understood. Thank you.
I'd like a clarification on that. I'm hearing comments from this council about controlling somewhat what can be discussed, what can't be discussed, when it can be discussed, and how it can be discussed. If anyone wants to discuss with Mandy any subject, they want to discuss it, they have every right to discuss it with Mandy, and she has every right to discuss it with you. Now, if something has been put on pause and you're asking Mandy to do extra work, that's something different, but I wanted to make it clear, there is no restrictions on a council member, who they speak to, what they speak about, whether it's midnight or 5:00 in the morning or on Sunday afternoon. So if someone wants to come up and talk to Mandy about something that's on pause, they have every right to talk about it. I just want to make sure that it's clear that there are no rules about what you can talk about and what you can't talk about.
That's clear, and I understand that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Close. No, too late.